Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here this evening. I just wanted to remind everybody that we'll be recording this so that people who couldn't join us will be able to watch it. Just a couple of logistics. If you could mute so we don't get the background noise. There's a few people on right now that still need to mute. So last week, Dr. Jermaine presented a lot of information about safety regulations and updates from the governor and the Rhode Island Department of Health. And we all felt it was important that we also hold our own school-based town hall meetings to just reconnect after the first few weeks of school and to take any questions that you have. We have developed a very short PowerPoint with a couple of topics to review. And then I know that a few people did submit questions on our invitation to participate. So we'll take those questions and then between Marson and Mr. Vee and I, we will enter the chat for any additional questions. So we will kick off the meeting now. So just a couple of reminders about some forms that have gone home over the past couple of weeks. The lunch application, just a reminder that this year it is one form for the entire family. And we're asking for all families to fill out that form. And if you have children at Pell, it would probably make the most sense for your form to go back to Pell School. But you just need to fill out one form for the whole family. Also, we sent home our emergency forms, whether you were a distance learning family or an in-person family. It's great for us to have those updated forms and really imperative that we have the most up-to-date contact information. And especially in the way that we're communicating with emails, we have to have the most updated email. Nick, I'm not sure if we lost the... Okay. The other form that was on there is every student needs a student agenda. And in this student agenda book, there's quite a bit of information about how Thompson works. And if you could make sure that the student handbook front page is signed, that indicates that you've read through the material in your child's student agenda. So really appreciate all those forms coming back. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Next up, we just want to make sure that families were aware that we've been offering a Google Classroom support service through our librarian, Jane Perry. And she's been doing a great job of meeting with students and parents individually to walk them through their Google Classroom environment, how to access their lessons, how to turn in assignments. And we've actually done a lot of the work... She's done a lot of the work with Ivana Humphrey, who is our translator this year. So they've been working with students and families who speak Spanish and helping them work through the Google Classroom environment and as well as any other family who needs it. So we put her phone number up here and her extensions. You could reach her directly to set up an appointment. And her email is there as well. If... We had this presentation in Spanish as well, and Marson is going to put it up on our website afterwards. So any Spanish-speaking family who you may know, or if you're a part of this call right now, that service is available in Spanish and English. And again, it's a great way to just walk through Google Classroom and for kids to see how to turn in assignments, how to access their assignments, and go through what they need to for the day. Pause really quick here before I go to the next slide, just to see if there's any questions that come up.
I can put a plug in for Jane. She's been a great resource for me as I try to jazz up the morning announcements with music and voice from our students. So we've been having a lot of fun trying to make the morning announcements a little bit more interactive. But she's a great resource and a great new addition to the Thompson team.
So I don't see any questions in the chat. And it's hard for me to see if anyone wants to raise their hand or ask something because I'm presenting, so I don't really see. But if anybody has a question, please feel free to pause me and ask that question. The other announcement we wanted to make sure people were aware of is we've had a tremendous amount of support from local organizations for Thompson teachers and students. And it's been spearheaded a little bit by Fab Newport, but it's truly been a collaborative effort between the community organizations that are in Newport. And right now, we have about 20 of them who have offered to support a classroom or a unit or a lesson in any way. So our teachers are currently reviewing these organizations, their missions, and what types of learning that they can support. And hopefully, over the next few weeks and months, they're going to be reaching out to these community partners to help them run lessons in their classroom. And you know, this is a... It's a pretty big ask. And so we're... You know, right now, we're just having our teachers review the information and see what organizations are out there and want to support. But we really hope that by the winter and by the spring, we've connected a lot of these organizations to our classrooms. And we are taking the work forward and moving together in terms of our curriculum and helping students reach their standards of learning and their grade level. If you have any specific questions about the community partners, I'm happy to field any questions you have. My direct phone number at the school is (401) 619-7145. (619) 7145, if you want to call me. And then my email is just my first and last name, nicholasvakarott@npssri.net. So if you have any questions or would like to know more about it, please reach out. But for now, we wanted to make sure families were aware that these organizations have been offering to do this. And we're hoping to kick it off as soon as we can. But obviously, with the lift of COVID and everything else, don't expect any announcements to happen in the next, like, week or two or even month. It's going to take some teachers some time to plot this out and make it work methodically and well for both students and the classroom. All right. And that brings us to our last slide, which is just, thanks for showing up. Thanks for supporting us. We know a few of you have asked some questions, so we're happy to use this time to answer those questions. And we wanted to just put up some links here. We have a TMS Facebook page through our PBIS program. We also have one as just the middle school itself. And then we have our school website up there as well. Make sure that everyone has these. Please feel free to spread them and share them. Dr. B. is going to move into answering some of your questions.
Sure. So the first question that we received was, "What, if any, impact will occur if a majority of the distance learning students request to attend in person after the 60 days?" So one of the things that we did when we were designing a multitude of different schedules was that we made a distance learning section in every cluster. So we were, you know, thinking about how the district had given families' choice around deciding if they wanted to go out the first 60 days, the semester, or the full year. So by creating this distant learning section, we created actually a safe pod so that as families make the decision after 60 days, this would be the section in each cluster in every grade that they would go into that section. So we've been reviewing the numbers of our 60-day families. And we can continue to invite those families back and still stay within our 15 students per classroom. So we're excited to be able to share that information. And that is the answer to that question. The next question was, "Is there any approximate date when Thompson might have five days in person instead of the hybrid model?" And honestly, the only way that we can do a five-day-a-week model is if there is a change in the Department of Health's requirements on the safe distance between students and staff. So right now, based on our square footage, we can only fit 15 desks in all of our content classrooms. So that makes it, right now, very difficult for us to have anything beyond the AB schedule. But we are excited to be able to bring in our 60-day students at this point. The same question, "When will 5th graders returning to school more than two days? And when will that be reevaluated?" So, you know, as I'm sure many of you watch the governor's message and, you know, read in the paper, you know, we're really trying very, very hard at Thompson and within the district to keep the students six feet apart and create safe pods within their clusters so that the students are traveling with the same group of students. And actually, our teachers travel... The same group of teachers travel around your children so that children are not moving all over the building. So those were the four questions I got initially. And then some last-minute updates from my trusty assistant, Marson. A family asked, "What are your current numbers at Thompson in each grade, distance learning students compared to in-person students?" So in grade five, we have 101 in-person students and 54 distance learning students. In grade six, we have 95 in-person and 49 distance learning. And in grade seven, we have 88 in-person students and 53 distance learning. And in grade eight, 95 in-person and 55 distance learning students. So that is the breakdown. And we can add that little chart to our weekly letter to you if that's helpful. And also along, we could list some of the community partners that Mr. Vee was just mentioning to you as well in our weekly letter.
I also see some questions have come in through the chat. I'm going to read those out right now, and Dr. B. and myself can respond. First, thank you, Amory. Love Fab Newport. That is great. We do do really happy to have them supporting us. Second up is from Kendra3774. "Can we ask the teachers to have the students use the planners? In the past, it would be great to utilize them." So my first response to that is just that, you know, teachers do use that, but a lot of them are also using Google Classroom as a way for students to be organized. So it is by the teacher's preference for how they think is best to organize their class. We do use the organizer or the planner, but not all. Dr. B., would you add anything to that?
Sure. We... Just like we write to our parents weekly, we send out a letter weekly to our teachers just to update on a variety of things. So we'll be sure to be sharing some of the questions and feedback that comes from this town hall meeting tonight. And we will mention that organizational tool. I know for me, it's kind of a running joke, but I write things down, like, seven... The same thing seven times so I can cross it off seven times. Really, maybe a little neurotic, but it's a strategy that seems to work for me. So I get it, Kendra. You know, I think it's a great tool to help our students stay, you know, super organized between the pen and paper and then the Google Classroom. So we'll be sure to share with the teachers about the agenda.
All right. Also from Kendra was, and this is Christina Dawson asked the same question here. Essentially, it is, "Are teachers going to be posting grades in Aspen? And what is the... What do you expect for looking and viewing at assignments and grades?"
So we've just been recently meeting with the grade-five teachers as they're moving towards posting their assignments into Aspen. And again, we will, you know, we'll be updating the teachers that, you know, it's great that we've got more parents going to the parent portal and looking for, you know, how their child's doing and their assignments. So, you know, we will be reminding teachers to posting completed assignments into Aspen. I know that, you know, everything's really been a work in progress, but, you know, we really appreciate that parents are starting to go more into the parent portal because everything will be able to be viewed on that.
Dr. Guyver, thank you for the support and your comment. Much appreciated. Our last question right now in the chat is from Ms. Zeller. Barbara Zeller saying, "Can we please make sure that teachers are putting due dates on their assignments, especially the weekly summary that we've asked them to put out at the beginning of the week?" So that, I think, I can answer for Dr. B. And we can make sure that's a part of that weekly letter that she's talking about, that we send to faculty as a reminder to put due dates on those. That is a fair question. And Dr. B., that sums it up. I don't know if there's anyone who has a question that came to mind, if they want to speak to anything right now.
You know, I can just share that, you know, with all the planning that we did and, you know, being a little anxious about, you know, phasing in the students, it really was a great opportunity for all of us to get to know your students, whether they were distance learning or are coming in person. And the staging that we did, I can't say enough for the staff and the custodial crew, you know, working with us on, you know, at first what they thought maybe were some crazy ideas about, you know, posted signs out on the front lawns with the teachers' names and chalking off areas in the back for safe squares for kids. And, you know, it really worked out nicely. The students have been incredible about the mask-wearing. And the minute they see me, they all know, like, oh, that's right, six feet apart. So, you know, they're all really being very conscientious and very safe. And it's really just been a joy seeing the students each week. And now that we're in full swing with the 7th and 8th grade, it's, you know, the school is buzzing, not buzzing as loudly as it would if we were all back full-time. But it's just, it's great to see all your children. So I just wanted to be sure I shared that. So I already have my post-it note out. I'm writing down those three things: due dates, using the agenda. And see, this is why I write it seven times. I already forgot the other one. Due dates, using the agenda. Nick, do you remember the third one?
It was Aspen, posting grades and assignment in Aspen.
Aspen. See, this is why we work well together. So I see Dr. Jermaine is here. I don't know, Colleen, did you want to say anything? Not to put you on the spot here.
You do... Ed Thompson and, you know, you two have done with Marson. Great job, your custodians, teachers, staff. It's great to see everyone. I'm just here for moral support. And yes, the new dashboard has been posted on our website, so we'll be doing that on a regular basis for all probable cases. And we'll keep people informed on a daily basis. And of course, if there's ever any positive cases, we'll alert the community and everyone to that. Keep up the great work. Thank you, Dr. B. And thank you, Mr. V. And thank you, Ms. Kara Martin. Thank you.
I actually had a question about the numbers on the dashboard.
Sure.
So on the 5th, I... On the 5th, it looks like, I don't know, trying to see, like, it says the number of individuals in quarantine says Thompson would be two, but it's showing like three for Pell. Am I missing something? Wouldn't those add up? Like, add up across? Am I not reading the last three columns right?
I'm going through the dashboard. And Barbara Zeller, all I can say to you is, that's what occurs each day.
Right, right.
Let me go to the... I'm going to go to the dashboard.
Well, while that's being looked up, Amy Hoag asked a question in the chat about being invited as a guardian to Google Classrooms. Ms. Hoag, my understanding is that you would actually only need to be invited by one teacher, and that's going to give you access to all your students' classes. Our tech teacher, Amy Shinago, did the research behind that, and that's what she presented to us. I'll admit, normally, I look these things up, but there's so many new features that happen all the time that I haven't looked into it. So if you have not gotten access into all your students' classes, please let us know. But for now, you should have only received one contact, and that should have got you into all your students' classrooms. Okay, great. Thank you.
Usually, the homeroom teacher does it.
Yep.
I don't know if you can hear me. I'm looking at the dashboard now. And on October 5th, we had no probables at Rogers and Thompson. Pell had two probables and one, two students and one staff probable. No one has confirmed cases. Knock on wood, don't want to jinx that. And Thompson had two in quarantine. I don't see any student... I don't see anyone in quarantine for Pell.
Right. So where did the two in quarantine for Thompson come from?
There were two people that had to go into... There were two people, individuals that had to go into quarantine from outside the school. It was, they worked for us, but some outdoor, outside-the-school activity.
So then, the number that's in that quarantine doesn't necessarily correlate to the three schools?
No, just to Thompson.
Just to Thompson.
Okay. I don't know if you guys had heard yet, but there is a positive at Middletown High School that hit the news tonight.
No, but we're hoping...
Yeah.
I'd love to say we're hoping it never happens here. And I keep knocking on the wooden table here. But yes, they have a positive. I believe Tiverton, Barrington, Crystal Warren also have positives.
Oh, I didn't think it'd even come to the island at all yet. I didn't even think Tiverton had any.
Little Compton has one also.
Okay, I'm going to stay right where I am.
Well, it's, you know, keeping the social distancing, the masks, washing our hands, they're fine. Best things to do.
Absolutely.
And for the public, I guess I'll share this. If you go on and look at Newport County, it will reflect the positive cases in general for Newport County.
Dr. B., we have one more question in the chat. Is there any possibility of DL students being able to meet teachers in person at some point, coming from Ms. Jennifer G.?
Yeah, I know that we had hoped with the distance learning bags that we put together, we did ask teachers to come down when they weren't teaching, help with the, you know, just to say a quick hello. I'm just wondering about, you know, how we would pull this off safely. You know, if it would be like in small groups. Yeah, Jennifer, you know, thanks for bringing that up. I'm going to have to, like, kind of think on that, how we could do that safely. And, you know, for the different grade levels. So right, like, for right now, that would be, you know, 54 5th graders, 54, you know, families that are doing distance learning. So that, you know, we'd have to do it in small groups because it can't be any more than 15. So we would have to think about how we would pull that off, probably, you know, grade level at a time and only 15 at a time.
Would it be possible to do something at Carden's for maybe one grade and then at the school for another grade? Of like smaller, like, outside groups on maybe a professional development day?
Yeah, I mean, Barbara, that's an interesting idea. I know that we have a very busy first professional development day happening in a couple of weeks, but... Yeah, we'll think of something. I mean, we pulled off the in-person grade-level groups outside. So we'll think of something.
Barbara, appreciate that response.
Yeah, I know. It's so interesting to, you know, be in the classrooms with the teachers. The one thing that I heard is that, you know, everyone really appreciates that the teachers are, you know, trying to pull off teaching students in person and also our virtual and making the students feel, you know, included and part of the class. And so that's been, that's been great to see. We're going to be providing more professional development on doing breakout groups and, you know, so there's more to come and more engagement. And as Mr. V. mentioned, you know, the work we're going to be doing with community partners and, you know, is really some exciting opportunities for kids. So we're just constantly trying to think of different ways that we can change the learning environment so that it's, you know, fun and exciting for our middle school kids.
Well, the governor keeps mentioning about all this outside stuff. There's also maybe something over at Fort Adams as well, because she has talked about the state parks a lot.
Yeah, we're exploring those options, but it's a lot with transportation and a whole cluster of kids over there, plus the kids who are also at home online.
Did the 5th graders ever get a chance when they were at Pell? Did the 5th graders ever get a chance, when they were at Pell, to come over and meet the teachers this year? Or was that something that would have happened after we were already out for COVID before?
Yeah, that was something that was scheduled to happen in the spring but could not because of COVID.
Okay.
Well, I can tell you, it's... The days fly by here very quickly. And I know that we have a PTO meeting coming up. We'll be, you know, sharing some ideas around, you know, doing some fun things for students and parents and staff. So I'm looking forward to our first meeting. And we'll also be talking a little bit about our school improvement team and developing that. So I hope you can come. Well, I know Kendra will be getting an invitation out real soon. So if there are any more questions, I know, you know, there's more town meetings to come this evening. So we appreciate everybody being here this evening. And thanks, Colleen, for being here. Marson and Mr. V., so thank you very, very much.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Bye-bye.